Can we call this meeting order? Can we have the flag to the flag, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have roll call.
Mayor LaPorte, Mr. Skoo, Deputy Mayor Carter.
Here.
Trustee Barker.
Here.
Trustee Garrett.
Here.
Here.
Superintendent Webb.
Here.
Deputy Kurt.
Here.
Okay, has everybody reviewed the minutes from the previous meetings? And if so, can we have a motion to accept the minutes from the August 9th meeting?
Before we get to that, I'd just like to know, we got the minutes late again. We got them on Friday. According to my handbook for the New York State National Collective officials handbook, we're supposed to have the minutes within two weeks of the last board meeting. Is there any reason why we're not getting them?
This past Friday.
Yeah, last month. Last month we got them within two weeks.
I think you got them before that because I was on vacation all last week and they did them before I left.
Was it Friday before we got it?
It wasn't Friday before.
They might have been a couple days after the two weeks, but it was like Monday or Tuesday, like into the beginning of the third week when they were done.
I think legally we have to have them by two weeks. So I think we should stick to the policy of two weeks because that's what the law says that we have to do. Because if somebody else is to walk in the building and say, "I'd like copy of the board minute meetings." Fifteen days after the meeting, we'd have to provide them to them legally. And we're not able to do so right now.
Okay, so we have a motion. Second, give me a second.
Oh, second.
Okay, second by trustee, lawyer, all in favor?
Aye.
Right.
Carry. We have a second special board meeting on August 24th. We have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Okay, second.
That's the one we already had.
Yes.
Second.
Take the mic, trustee. Lawyer, all in favor?
When he said we have another, but see another set of amendments.
Aye. And you weren't there.
I wasn't there.
Same. Okay, this time we'd like to open up the meeting to the public. What's your name and?
My name is Scott Brothers.
Scott Brothers?
Yeah.
And your air force?
I live right here on 13 Pine Street. Just a couple issues. First issue is the biggest concern I have, this is the only place that I can call that I cannot get an emergency number for anything that happens. I tried, I tried.
Not to interrupt you, but we talked about this 30 days ago and there should be an answering machine in there. We talked about it and said there was going to be, I think you donated it.
Well, it's not.
But we have a problem with the service.
That was kind of.
It's corrected. Champlain Telephone lines did not allow us to have the answering machine at the same time the way that we were set up. So they have corrected that issue. So if the machine will be activated.
It's going to be a cost of $75 to have the answering machine on one line. And we're about to pay them before. It probably could also be a permanent line and that way.
Seventy-five dollars? And I don't need to cut your scarf. This is an issue that we've already crossed. I'm just looking, I thought it was up and running.
Seventy-five dollar installation with Amy's equipment.
So we need to buy one first to rent it?
We are going to try to use Amy's. But the telephone company has to install it and it costs seventy-five dollars. Seventy-five dollars to have it installed. Amy's machine.
Financial machine?
Yes, on Joe's side. The question is, we're not sure if Amy's will work. So what we need to do is decide tonight, yes, do we want to spend the seventy-five dollars? Have Amy's put on. Secondly, if it doesn't work, is it okay to purchase a new one between fifty and probably seventy dollars? And it can be done right away.
Why are we paying seventy-five dollars to hook up the answering?
Because we can't hook it up here.
Can't you just plug it into the wall? It has to be, home company has to do it.
Why don't we go to Walmart and get a regular answering machine? Is it a problem with the answering machine, a special one?
No, we can't.
Because of the tools. And the computers all come in here.
We can get a regular.
It should have no bearing on it. I have five lines into my office and I didn't pay them seventy-five dollars to hook a money up.
Answering machine?
That's right.
See, at Spring Maid I had an answering, just a regular answering machine. I had five lines.
Well, we talked to Joe and I talked to a couple distributors and they don't say they do not have an answering machine for our two lines. It doesn't, it won't handle. So we got to talk to Joe, he can set up an answering machine.
Yeah, it only picks up one line.
It only will pick up one line.
It only picks up one line, won't pick up all the others.
I mean, we've been on this issue for months. This is getting ridiculous. This was, I've been, 30 days ago, I said, "This is it. Let's get an answering machine because of the importance."
Well, they did. It was a very nice day, they did, and it was an issue and they just resolved it this week with the telephone company.
How do we resolve this right now and get it done? Right now, if it's okay with the board, I'll take responsibility of it and I'll get an answering machine working here and it won't cost seventy-five dollars. We'll use your motion.
I can't imagine that it should cost seventy-five dollars to install an answering machine.
See, this is the problem. We want people like you to be able to call us. If you've got concerns or problems, we want you to be able to call us.
Well, the reason why I wanted somebody is because of the flood over there this weekend, on Thursday night. Okay? The problem, the reason why I wanted to get ahold of somebody is because of that sinkhole in St. Mary's devoured. Whatever dirt they put in there, and I had a concern with the kids going at school at seven o'clock the next morning. I was afraid that somebody was going to get hurt.
That's true.
So if it wasn't for somebody else calling in and knew the number, okay, to somebody, either to Joe or somebody, to release one of the public, the works guys at 5:30 in the morning, because I was up all night pumping out my basement, I would have, they would have never known that there was a sinkhole problem there for the little kids walking to school or riding their bikes.
Absolutely.
And that's, that was my only concern. I didn't, I cared about what was going on with the gully and stuff. I was more concerned with somebody getting hurt. And I didn't have no mom. I called here and it just rang and rang and rang. Well, then I called the town of Champlain and they gave me like 50 numbers. "If you have a problem with this, you call this number. This extension, dial this, dial this." I called Ross's Point, same thing. I go, "Well, wait a minute, there's something wrong." And I walked up here and I looked and see if there had any other emergency phone numbers. There was none because I just live right up the street. So I called the public works still. There was nothing, you know? There's two numbers and I couldn't, I was getting frustrated because I didn't know, I've only been in here at this house for a year. So I don't know everybody and I don't have their numbers. So I was trying to get somebody to, just to say, "Hey, there's a problem and that needs to be addressed immediately before the kids start school." And it was, thank God, but I was getting frustrated because I couldn't, I didn't have no numbers.
Right, and you should. Everybody in the village should be able to contact us, whether it's during hours, after hours. If you have an emergency, you should be able to contact us and let us know what's going on. There's no excuse for not doing that. I apologize to you, but we've been working on this. But we've been working on this since for, it's a very expensive system. When you call the town, call Ross's Point, our budget is really tight here. So we're trying to get by and that's where we came up with the answering machine.
Well, that's what I figured that you have at least an answering machine saying, "Okay, here, this is the village office. If you have a problem, you need to contact this person after hours."
And I didn't mean to doubt you because when you said that, I'm saying, "Wait a minute. I know we've cured something." But I was not aware that nothing ever happened.
Why do you think I called you on Friday?
Right.
On Thursday, well, actually Friday morning when you were out of town.
Right.
That's the reason why I called. If it's Joe's number or somebody's number here, I knew you were on the board. That's the reason why I called you.
I couldn't call you until, like I explained, I was out of town, like I back Saturday I called you, but.
Right.
And the fact of that, this is the second emergency issue this month that we've had that somebody needed to contact somebody.
Well, we should put some numbers right in the window.
Well, the whole key, the whole thing is the right phone system.
I know, but we should have it posted there too.
It's the right phone system if we could afford that.
Well, and we were going to have a demo on that and that was two months ago, which doesn't happen.
The demo, and I know we didn't get into a lot of discussion, when Joe did the numbers on it, it was a payback of five years.
Three.
Or three years. It was a three-year payback. It's not rocket science, number one. Number two, do we really need a demo? Is AT&amp;T or Champlain phone, are they going to come down here for five phones? Like we're Twin Towers phone communication?
They said they set it up and they go, maybe Ross's Point or the town.
Right, and we never did.
And that was what was decided at the time that we would do that.
That's why we went with the answering machine. Because it was quicker, we could get it done within thirty days. And then if something happens, somebody would have a way to contact us or Joe for an emergency.
So I think, I think the issue is resolved. It's just a matter of getting that, you know, you're going to take care of it immediately.
I will take care of it.
I'm sure if you're going to handle it, it's going to be done right away.
Right.
And the issue is resolved. And we'll have the answering machine with numbers that they can contact people with.
It's almost like having, you know, somebody have a heart attack and you don't have no way to get ahold of the ambulance. You know, you don't know who to call.
Right.
I mean, that's, I mean, that's what the stress was with the, you know, St. Mary's opening up at seven o'clock the next morning. I was kind of very nervous.
And I'll speak for the board, we as the board, we apologize for that, but we are working on it. You know, I kind of feel little right now because I thought sure this was addressed. I know it was a concern, but we never really accomplished what we wanted to, but it will be.
Well, while we're on the subject of the gully, I'd like to bring up a couple points about that. First of all, putting dirt in that sinkholes is a bad idea. All you're doing is putting dirt into the culvert underneath the ground. You're making the situation worse.
I agree with, I agree with you.
I mean, that's not a good thing. I'll tell you, I lived there for 20 years now and.
Excuse me, just, you look familiar, but I can't place it.
Well, I'm Jeff Moore. Most of the other people probably know me. But anyway, this situation has continued to worsen over the last 10 years. Every time we get more than an inch of rain, that fills up. And Scott is going to find out. I have found out. I've only owned the house a year and I pumped out my basement three times. You know, this has been brought to the board before and they were saying, "Well, you know, it's an unusual occurrence" or something like that. It's not. This is not the first time. And that has got to be undermining that road. Eventually, you're going to put a school bus down or something. Okay, water goes downhill. And I know when Jim brought this thing to the board before, they were trying to say, "Wow, you know, that's naturalized land." No, it isn't. Originally, that was gully the same way, all the way right straight through. Somebody filled it in. That culvert is a stone culvert. I don't know if you guys have ever looked down there, but it's not, not a modern culvert at all. Somehow or other, that thing has become plugged up. And it's going to continue to worsen. It's not getting better. I can tell you that over the last 10 years, it's getting worse. And what it's also done, the fluent line runs down through there and that's busted that line more than once. This is like about the fourth time I can remember that that fluent line has gotten busted and we have raw sewage coming down there. You know, it has to be addressed. It's really a bad situation. I don't know, it's nothing we can do about it now as far as who the hell ever decided to put a sewer line down the middle of a creek. Probably wasn't a great idea, but now we're stuck with it. But the thing is, at some point, we have to do something about this. I mean, I know Celine lives nearby there and I mean, if there's some kind of grant out there or something, she could probably help you locate something to do that. I mean, you look at the drainage project they did in Ross's Point, that's multi-million dollar thing and, you know, and they nearly didn't accomplish very much there. They still got the drains down below grade on the road. But, you know, we need to do something here.
Exactly.
It affects, you know, it doesn't affect a lot of people, so probably you're thinking, "Well, we can get away with that." But, you know, there's that road there and the school buses going across.
I don't think that's true.
We need to look at something to fix this.
The reasoning was, first of all, you have to work from the upper part to the lower part. And the upper part issue, there's an issue.
Is resolved.
Is being resolved. And then we've got to work down from there. You can't work from the bottom, work up.
I don't know if you're familiar with Garsel Lake as its so-called name, just upstream from you. There's ten to twelve, a lot of water.
That drains all the way to Shazie. I don't realize that. When it rains, it brings a lot of water down. And the state, when they put, when they had the problem downtown and they put the new culverts in there, they were way too small. I don't know who knows.
Yeah, and they found that out. They had to redo it now.
Yeah, because I walked, I walked out this past weekend after the rain. I wanted to check everything and see how it's looking. And I started that culvert down here in the corner and it is about a five-foot culvert that goes underneath the water. Perfect drainage right there. It's from there up to your, up to Pine Street right here. It's now resolving this issue above you, but the problem is, when we clear that out, it's going to bring everything down to you.
It's got to come down.
So yours is the next issue. And I believe, I had a trusty lawyer was going to bring it up at tonight's meeting because we finally resolved, or we're on the way of resolving the issue with, you know, the Garsel Lake situation on the other side of Ice Factory. That's going to be taken care of, we hope, within the next few weeks, within the next month. That's going to bring all that water right down faster. So we have to, I mean, tonight we have to make a decision to do something with that culvert system.
Well, I think it's going to end up having to be replaced because it's, like I said, it's a stone culvert in there and it goes for quite a ways, just being stones, about two foot by two foot, a stone culvert.
There's actually more than just that issue there. Over this weekend, after I talked to trustee Barker and that's how he knew I was bringing it up tonight, there's wastewater pipes through there and there's storm drain problems. And then when you see a sinkhole, exactly what you said, there's a major problem. That dirt's going somewhere, there's something major going on there. And that's why we had discussed it and I said, "Well, board meeting's coming up. We're going to handle it." And I'm glad, I'm glad you stopped in.
Well, I'll tell you, putting more dirt in there is just plugging the culvert worse.
It was covering the openings for the immediate safety hazard that we had.
Well, I think you had the right idea of putting a fence around it. By throwing dirt in there, you're just throwing dirt down the culvert. Unless you're planning on digging it up real soon, you're making the problem worse.
The only issue with digging it up is we don't have the equipment here to dig it up because it's so deep.
No, that's quite, that's quite a.
That's another issue that we've solved.
And I think there was, was mentioned months ago that you may have assistance from another municipality to assist it, but if necessary. Remember what Selena mentioned? She said, "If you need help, let us know. Maybe the county can assist us with equipment to dig that if necessary."
We may need some longer reach at that one location.
Yeah, we don't have the capacity to dig that deep. That's how deep it is.
It's twenty-some feet down approximately. And I think I mentioned it to Scott when I was talking with him over the weekend. Remember I told you what was going on? We finally got conquered one problem. This is our next one. We're not, I'm not telling you that because you're sitting here.
Well, I want to tell you, it's a big problem because.
Oh, it's a major problem. It is, you're right.
Water will find its way downhill and you'd be surprised how much damage you can do in a very short period of time. You're going to have a ditch through there whether you want it or not. A couple more.
More so than that, not just the problem with the stormwater getting down to our wastewater plant. That expense is a liability of a child. What dollar amount can you put on that? This is a very small price to pay to practice and ensure many liabilities.
Throwing dirt in there isn't going to help. You really need to put a fence around it and say, "Hey, you can't have people there because that's going to continue the road." And usually, I can tell you exactly when these things happen, but just before the snow flies, we're going to have another big backup. We have a backup in the spring and then usually one or two during the summer. I mean, I've been there long enough to see it's just getting worse and worse.
We've had a lot of rain this year, which makes it even worse this year over other years. So it's probably more often this year than the other.
And I'll tell you, that water is, I mean, I smell, I was going to come in and let you guys know anyway, that it's starting to stink down there, so I'm assuming that you've got some kind of a break or something. Well, I can vouch for it. When you start smelling it, it's backing up in my house right now because on the last one on that line, and they sewer sucked it twice already and it cleared the problem up. So when I start smelling it in my house, there's a problem. So it's backing up into my pipe into my house because when you turn on the water in my sink, you can start smelling it. And when that happens, they have to sewer suck.
And like what I told you, Scott, remember when I was speaking to you over the weekend? After, you know, I've done a lot of investigation on this. I believe that that sinkhole is partially part of the sewer blockage. There's a hole in the sewer line where we're getting stormwater and dirt and everything else in there. Once you get enough of it, it doesn't move and it slowly backs up because you're the last one.
I'm the last one.
You're going to be the first one to get it.
That's exactly what's happening.
And we've had problems, I think, last winter. You were there again.
Yeah, it was me. I spent a lot of money.
One o'clock in the morning, I was out there with the men.
Exactly.
And we managed to get it through where they've said in past times, they've tried it and never got through. But we managed to get it through. So I know there's a break. It's not, you're absolutely right.
Yeah, we were at one o'clock in the morning sewer sucking up that sewer line. We finally got it to break. But, you know, how that problem occurred was a problem at my house when I called you.
That's right.
For the emergency service that night.
At the time I was there, I wasn't well-versed on all the series of events and, but I've had a grip on it from then till now. And I know, and this is, and not because you're sitting here, this was an issue for tonight. Trust me.
Well, he's going to end up getting froze out again this year if we don't address it now.
And we can't have this.
My pipe is lying on the ground to the sewer. My extent, they've already replaced it once, last winter.
So it's open into?
It's not covered. It's not covered.
It's not covered with soil. It's a solid pipe, it's not leaking, but.
No, but it froze last year and split.
The reason why it froze is because it couldn't get into the main because the main was backed up. And as it backed up, the bank, this pipe is exposed with no coverage. It freezes.
Now, why is it exposed? I am not familiar with that. Why is the pipe exposed?
The gully and the sewer main is probably 15, 20 feet off the bank.
Probably 15, 20 feet, yeah.
15 to 20 feet, there's a sewer main, the one to his house, the one to Celine. Farther up, there's two more that I.
Danny Bellrose, probably the store.
Bellrose, you can see these lines that come into the main. Nothing is buried because it's in the bottom of a creek.
And it freezes and then it backs up.
Now, if water flows, the pipe somewhat stays dry and there's enough people, it will never freeze. When it freezes, when there's a blockage, the water sits there and slowly backs up, up to him, up to whoever's there. Then it freezes, then he's done. Once you clean the main, he's still done, she's done, whoever's on the line because the smaller pipes are froze. So the most important thing is keeping the main open so these problems don't occur for everybody up the line here.
And right now, the smell also is also coming from like three blocks out of the man, the manhole or off in the manhole, so it's exposed to the air. So you are, there is.
The manhole broke open?
Yes.
That's new information to me.
As of today.
As of today.
Yeah, we're going to have somebody down there in the next two days trying to patch it up right now. Just so we don't have the fumes and infiltration from the stormwater. But it's a temporary patch, so we do the whole solution.
The worst part is this has been going on for years. That's the worst part, to have to sit here in front of you and say, you know, "Well, we haven't done anything in years." Well, we're going to change. We're going to do something about these situations. I mean, the citizens, the people in the village, that's what we're here for. We're here to take care of these problems, not to ignore them. And whatever it takes, we're going to address this issue. Like I said, trustee Porter was going to bring it up this evening. I met with the residents just upstream from you this past weekend and about five residents and, you know, the Garsel Lake issue. Fifteen years this has been going on. This is people's backyards and we're calling it a lake. That's not right. That's not right. It's not. And so we're going to address these issues.
We've got a good 15 there. I wish it was in my backyard and not in my basement. I mean, I had a foot of water in my basement. I had two sub pumps running. I could not keep up with this last time. Well, that's what happens to me too. Like, once the water gets up, then about a foot or two at the top of the gully, you know, that water slowly works, it takes about two hours, it works its way into my cellar too. First 10 years I lived in that house, I never had a drop of water in there. And I know over time, it's only going to get worse because that water is going to find better and better paths in.
Well, you know, and years ago, they didn't have as much water coming through there as they do now because, you know, in construction over the years, they've changed the lay of the land in some wisdom of engineers. And there's more water that gets diverted into that gully as compared to somewhere else where it used to go.
Every time a road flooded on Route 11, what they do, they double, triple the size of the culvert. So now instead of holding back into a field for a little bit of time so everything else, it just dumps. And it's dumping so fast that it's coming to a bottleneck. Garsel Lake is, and I know it doesn't help you at all, but just knowing that something has been done. We've managed to.
Yeah, it's going to come down.
Well, no, what I'm saying is, that problem existed probably worse and longer than your problem. Not to say that yours isn't worse.
Well, then 10 years since that's started.
So my point is, we've finally made some headway, which is a major accomplishment, okay? So don't think that we're leaving you high and dry. Our next move is downstream and we will be talking about it tonight. Our funds are very limited. You have to understand that we're using, we're spending your money. You know, that's what we're here for. We're here to spend your money.
Well, like I said, you should check around and see what's available and what can be done.
Oh, absolutely, and.
Because I know drainage projects, there's money out there, not just from the village, but from the county or the state.
Well, there's, there's been an investigation over the years on monies and especially because of, was it two years ago now? That we had that minor earthquake that caused damage and that's probably propagated some of the problems in that area. We're unable to get any funding at all.
We thought, sure, we had a grant to cover some of that expense due to the earthquake. Well, let's throw some slack that way. And grants are tough, they're really tough. It's great when you get them, but.
Eventually, you'll have to replace the road and it'll be even more expensive.
Exactly.
You'll have to put drainage in and replace the road.
I think if you're going to replace the car, you're going to have to replace the road. I mean, you're going to have to dig it all up and.
At this point right now, it's not the idea of waiting for a grant anymore. It has to be done, grant or no grant, this is what it's come to. Because that whole situation, we're not breaking it up into two issues. You know, the Garsel Lake issue and then the Pine Street issue, that's all one issue. We've managed to get the first half of that issue started on the way and moving. Next, tonight, we're going to discuss the second half of that issue, which is Pine Street. It doesn't make any sense to move water from one side of a building to the other side of a building real fast and then do nothing about it from there. I mean, we're concerned about that water getting right to where it's got to go, which is a river. So, I mean.
It's going to go there one way or another. You don't have to encourage.
Exactly. Well, what we don't want is the infiltration and the backups on residents. Infiltration of that wastewater plant, trust me, costs you, the taxpayers, a lot of money. And this is not good. We know this and this is something that we're looking at also. I mean, we don't want to back it up into your basement, nor do we want to be spending your money to treat stormwater as raw sewage. It doesn't make sense.
I thought we smoke tested all that a few years ago. I remember we did. They came, because when, it was about eight years ago, I think, they, they smoke tested all the basements because they wanted to get all the sump pumps off the, they were all going into the village sewer. And I think they smoke tested all that. I don't think you got a lot of that, but you may have some storm drains or whatever. I mean, this is the, this is the most unusual sewer system I think I've ever seen.
Well, over the years, you know, there's been a lot of work on water and sewer lines in the village, but there's some areas that haven't been touched. And there's, even though there's less inflow, infiltration in the village, there's still some areas that there is some major problems. And over a period of time, there certainly has to be addressed because like trustee Porter said, it's costly to treat that water for no reason. And, and it's something that we've been trying to address, and it just unfortunately takes longer than what we'd like to take, and it's-
It seems like you're double, triple, you're, you're, you're spending more money than if you would just say, that's it, we're gonna fix the problem, because you're spending the money on the guys who go out there on a call, spending them overtime, treating that million, seven hundred thousand gallons, two, two million gallons of water from the rainwater, to treat it, to put it back into that river, and have it tested and sent away and all that stuff. You're just double dipping everything.
It's, it's reached that point for a while now, and that's why it's gotta be addressed. It's just, you can't let it go.
I know one thing I would've done, uh, and probably should do in the future when it goes over there, they should've put some cones out or something? Because you get somebody zooming down the street and hits that water, you're gonna end up getting, getting sued.
That's right.
Uh, you know, the crew was there, they should've just threw some cones out there till the water subsided, because it, it was, uh, yeah, it was about a foot and a half deep.
Well, I was, I was up all night pumping out. I, I didn't go to bed at all, because I had to keep up with the water, and I kept walking outside to make sure that nobody was using that, you know, using that. But it was from the telephone pole all the way over to the edge of the guardrail, all the way over the road. It hit Saint Mary's driveway, rushed down on the side of the tree. And it was in his garage. It was coming up to his garage, and then, and then about where his cars were. I thought his cars were gonna go down there. You know what I mean? Because the water was moving so fast, I thought for sure that they would just slide the car down into that, down behind his garage. I, you know, that's how fast it was moving. And I wasn't walking through there. I'd walk all the way down around Saint Mary's, come back around to see, you know, to make sure everything was going down. It was going down that sewer drain right by his garage, and then the one by, uh, Main Street down here, it was going in there like a whirlpool, you know? But the one by your house was stopped up. It wasn't even moving there.
Well, that one's still full of dirt.
Right. It wasn't even moving there. It was all moving over to the other side of the road.
Yeah, I was absolutely amazed when I drove down Pine Street and saw the water. I did see the water going over the top, but it was level with the top of the road. Now, I've been looking at this gully long enough, because we've been talking about this, and I couldn't believe how much water was in there.
That happens quite frequently.
Then I walked from Pine Street, like I said, through the backyards down here. I mean, there were rocks, dirt, everything got washed out, and it was-
Well, there's an eight-foot pipe by my, by my sewer drain, just sitting there. Eight-foot pipe.
You're lucky you got that sinkhole that was taking up some of the water, because, uh, the one that happened a couple of years ago almost took Carney's hedge up. The water was coming down there so quick and so deep, it dug a big rut right along his hedge line back at Carney's.
I think first thing we ought to do tomorrow morning is we ought to get a fence around there, instead of packing that with dirt. Let's get a fence around that hole and get it cordoned up, caution, a little shot. That way, at least we're protecting the kids and anybody that might walk by it first. You know, and I understand that, you know, the dirt is not a, if we get a rainstorm tonight, dirt's gone again.
Well, whatever little drainage we have, that's not helping.
That we threw on there, wouldn't wash away the grass underneath the side.
Wasn't there fencing up before?
Yes, we did.
Is it, oh, you took it down? I didn't realize that.
Yeah, the thing is, you keep putting, I mean, with little drainage we have, until something happens to correct it, by putting more dirt in there, it really, it really isn't helping the situation any.
And then what I understand too is on the, the side where the gully is, we used to have a big culvert there, a culvert screen that went over the top of it. There's a big steel grate that used to be in there. Years ago, for some reason, it was pulled off, which is meant to keep debris out of there. It was pulled off years ago and left on the side for what we, I don't know. I don't know why that was done. So, through the last eight, ten years, how, who knows?
Get trees, there's branches.
And everything's been down through there, so-
Well, I think the screen got plugged too.
Well, the screen was there to get breached down and clean it. Now, all that debris's gone inside.
Well, what happened there, when it used to flow freely, it didn't pick up a lot of debris, because it never got that high. But since it's gone up higher, it picks up everything, you know, and it's full of, you know, branches and foliage or whatever.
Anything, anything, pieces of asphalt, I mean, it's all down in there.
But before, when it just-
Debris or not, the culvert size under Pine Street is too small.
Too small.
It's way small.
No doubt.
I agree.
I mean, you actually walk in that gully and look up to the top of the road, and it's quite a ways up there, and just to think that that water's-
Over.
Larry, I don't know, it was Larry or, or, um, wait, he went by at nine thirty at night. I saw him, because I stopped there. I was out. I was, I was, I was- We started saying, we're gonna get hit, we're gonna get hit, you know, and I kept looking at the gully, and it was fine. It was about four and a half, five feet deep down below the road, when he went by at nine thirty. By eleven thirty, I had a foot and a half of water in my basement. That's how fast it went over the road.
Yeah, what's it-
And it wasn't even raining.
I think that's making you feel-
No, because it's all coming, it's delayed reaction.
And it came over that fast.
We'll get more rain coming this weekend, uh, with this next hurricane coming up.
Tell us not raining, because-
Well, like I said, you get over an inch of rain-
It was still full, and, yeah, it took a while. Usually, usually it doesn't take that long to drain out, and it did. Because I called Mr. Patton, and I wanted to find out where a certain pipe was, and I couldn't even get back, he couldn't show me, because it was still too high. He came out today to show me.
Well, I hope, I hope we've satisfied some of your, and, believe me, it's, we're, we are trying. We, we are doing something. The phone issue will be addressed, and the Garso Lake has been addressed, and this is our next. Not to say you're last on the list either. It was a joint thing. It's something that, no, I mean, and, and obviously, through the years, it's gotten worse. But it has been through previous years, so it, it's a situation, and it's mainly, you know, flooding's a problem, and, and what a liability. You're in a schoolyard. I mean, you know, we can't have this.
Yeah, well, that's, that's a drain, and it should never, it should never flood.
Should never wash the soil.
Not with a rainstorm. I mean, if you get something unusual, a big melt in the spring or something, yeah, I could see, you know, you may get overwhelmed, but, uh-
But when you have a twenty-foot gully to take the excess, you know, to allow it to rise if it has to a little bit, you know, that should be enough, but to fill up with twenty, twenty-five feet of water, then come over the road and flood everything below it.
We're talking about three and a half to four inches of rain within a twenty-four hour period. So, the major rain danger.
Yeah, but it's raining, so now it's the same way.
I can tell, I can guarantee you, because I've lived there twenty years, I tell you, the last ten years, more than an inch of rain, that gully's up at the top. There's, that's the way it is. And, and I just prepared for it.
I've only lived here a year, and I pumped out my basement three times, and when I bought the house, Mr. Patton said it was, he, I got proof that he didn't have that many problems until nineteen ninety-seven. That's, that's when it started.
I, I've only been here a year and a half, and I've monitored, and I don't disagree with you at all. I, I do know that an inch of rain, there's water there, and, and like, where'd it come from? Mainly from monitoring Garso Lake, not realizing that I knew there was a problem on this side of the street, but coming over the top and this stuff is, is newer information that I've been tracking.
Right. I just didn't, I just didn't think, you know, buying a house, I'd have to-
Especially that high on a bank.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't think I'd have to-
You're twenty feet higher than-
Pumping out, uh, six hours a night for three times, you know, as, as part of a- Something that the house has been here over fifty years, and he hasn't really had a problem. And then, with, I just buy it, and all of a sudden, three times in one year. I didn't think homeownership was like that.
And you people have been very patient, and your neighbors have been very patient, and if I can please ask you just to be a little more patient. We are doing something, and, and hold me to that. If you'd like to stay and rest at tonight's meeting, you're more than welcome. We will be discussing it tonight. If not, our board minutes will be available within the next two weeks after this evening. And you can see what we've decided on, what we talked about as far as this issue, which we will be taking care of this evening. Otherwise, if you have a computer, we're also online. You can review our board minutes on, online.
Hey, what's the site?
But, uh, our- And CalVision has, uh, it's usually the second Monday after the meeting. Is it villageschamplain.com?
Yes.
And you can review our board minutes, or, like I said, they'll be available within the next fifteen days, or if you'd like to stay this evening. But we will be addressing this issue one way or another. We're gonna take care of these issues, and, uh, I said, I, I apologize that it's taken so long, but we're finally getting to the point where we're gonna do something. One way or another, we're gonna do something about these problems. It's, it's unheard of to go on for this long. You know, when I, like I said, when I spoke to the other residents, it's been going on for ten, fifteen years. I mean, why hasn't anybody done anything? What are we waiting for? You know, somebody to get hurt? Is that, I mean, but we will be addressing this tonight, I assure you, so-
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I have another question while I'm here. Uh, who, who takes care of the streetlights?
Nice sec. And why do we have a call in a nice sec? Within the next, next two weeks, you should see all those lights repaired.
Now that it's getting dark early, and I go for a walk in the evenings, I've noticed an awful lot of them now.
I think through three of them now.
There's, there's more than that.
I've got about fourteen that's on our street.
Yeah, just right here.
I've given it to him verbally over the phone. He's gonna get a hard copy. Um, I'm just, I'm waiting for a couple more reports back, and he's gonna get a hard copy tomorrow, and he can have a list of it, uh, whatever I've called in, if, if you care. You always add to it. If you know of anything, just call and leave a message.
Okay.
We don't see them all.
There will be. There will be an answering machine.
Just brought the machine in.
Absolutely, absolutely will be. I'm gonna try and save you taxpayer seventy-five dollars by doing it. Hopefully.
I still can't believe it. A seventy-five dollar hook that up. Oh, yeah, they're looking.
Sure, well, of course, service call and pull something.
And then we realize, we're still have, we're still working with our road issues. I know this whole section, Spruce Street, Pine Street, they're all in terrible condition, terrible. Uh, we've only got so much money to work on. Joe and I have been working on a, a larger plan for long-term, what we can do with this problem. We only have a minimum amount of money, and we're trying to do the best we can. So, I mean, as far as your streets are concerned, first we'll take care of the gutter issue and the drainage issue, but, you know, your streets are still out there too. We're working on, on everybody's streets in the village, so, uh, you gotta bear with us, you know, a little bit of money and a lot to do. So, we've gotta, it takes a lot of research.
With gravel, gravel streets, as long as, uh, you know, I don't have water in my, in my basement, you know?
Right, well, first things first, and, and that's the first thing we have to deal with. Scott, I'm sure maybe you can vouch for this. I mean, you've had problems before, and were you satisfied with the results, how we responded and took care of it?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I mean, that's, that, 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 it wasn't a, it's not a problem. I just wanted to, to have a voice again, and, I mean, I've talked to you, and I've talked to Joe. I haven't talked to the other board members, and I just wanted to come in here and say that, first of all, I was a little bit upset about not having an answering machine, because I couldn't, I was, I was stranded. I'm going, who can I call? And looking through the phone book, and I find only two numbers, and I, and I was jumping around, you know, it's twelve-thirty at night, who am I gonna call? I'm gonna run over to my next-door neighbors and knock on the door and say, you know, Ben, what's their number? I ain't gonna do that. So, I didn't do that, but I just was a little frustrated about that, and I just wanted to make another, you know, just another voice again about that gully system.
And I'm glad you showed, and you're welcome.
You're welcome.
That's right. Yeah, that's what we're here for. If you have, if you have a question, if you have an issue, just pray it comes, come in.
And if, if you need to talk to a board member, you know, call the office. We're all here to serve the public. That's what we're, that's what we're here for. If you need, and it's, you know, once we get the phone systems together, but if, if during the day, you need to talk to somebody, or you wanna talk to a trustee, or the mayor, call the office, get the phone number, and, and feel free to call us, and let us know what your concerns or your, or if you have issues, just feel free to call us. You know, if a cat's in a tree or something like that, we, like I say, we're busy doing stuff, so trust me. We don't wanna hear about the cat stuck in a tree, but, anything, anything involving issues- Suggestions, ideas, or, or concerns. That's what we're here for, and we're trying to serve the community, so, uh, uh, our phone numbers are available, and then please feel free to contact us at, at any time that you need us. That's what we're here for.
Okay, well, thanks for your time and concern.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, uh, this is for the mayor. Uh, Albert was unable to be here tonight, so I'm taking his place. There was nothing from Albert that he wanted brought up, so I guess I'll go into a few items that I have. First of all, you know, I, I can appreciate the issues that, uh, our residents have, and as far as I'm concerned, I didn't realize it was such an issue. That should be our number-one priority, over everything else we're, we're doing, as far as, unless we have some other emergency, you know, over everything, including working on, you know, putting blacktop down or whatever. That's my opinion. We should try and resolve those issues, because that, that's an issue that, that is a-
Liability, major.
And, and I would like the backing of the board for that, and to, for Joe to proceed in whatever way is necessary to come up with a plan.
I, I made a few notes on that, because I, I, I did get involved. I was gone all week, but when I got back, the mess was done, but looking at the, uh, the fallout of it, um-
That is the first I heard of it tonight at all. Nobody mentioned words from me.
Well, I, I remember I told you Scott will be here due to the flooding and whatever, but I didn't get into detail.
I assumed it was the, the lake issue, the Garso Lake issue, yeah.
My thoughts on this, um, is number one, put this out for bid. Checking with the county first. Saying, is there any way we can use an excavator, if you could donate a man or whatever? When this goes out for bid, you get, if, if for some reason that is, we, we don't have the capability of reaching this. We have the manpower who can fix this. We have the cage and, and the safety harnesses and whatever we need. So, when this goes out for bid, I guess what we're looking for is a bid on an hourly rate for an excavator and an operator. We don't know what's there, so we can't, we can't put this out for bid, saying we wanna do this area and, and at this depth. We don't know. It's gonna be an exploration process, so when we go into this endeavor, we have to be prepared and ready. So, if we're into this, and when we see, oh my God, there's ten feet of eight-inch main, Joe's ready, go get the eight-inch main. Let's not worry about, well, it's so much a foot, let's cure this while it's open, get the excavator off the job, get the job done. These are my suggestions on how to handle this, because we don't know what's down there. We can only-
We can't leave it open and, and, and especially if it's, you know-
We can leave a certain area open and barricaded if need be for that day, but we don't want to run this into a week-to-week process. It's, we're talking twenty feet in the ground here.
Yeah.
Uh, it's gotta be tapered back for OSHA specs. There's a lot of digging. Our equipment isn't really designed for that. Hopefully, we would have, we have the employees to be able to fix the problem. I believe we do.
We can make sure that everything, we have the safety issues addressed. That's, that's the main-
And our employees, I think, are, are trained on that. They've been to the OSHA things and stuff like that. So, I mean, and if there is any questions, I'm sure you have resources to get these answers to, uh, I mean, I don't want, twenty feet in the ground, I don't want somebody to get hurt. That's, that's the whole thing. If that's the case, we'll sub the whole job out. We'll, we'll, we'll send our men home for a week, and we have something for them to do, but I don't think we should do that. Our men are capable of doing this. Things, do we have those? Do we currently have those? Carrier cave-in barriers for, for cave-ins or something like that?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, we do.
Yes, we do.
We have one little trench, uh-
Right.
That thing is only four feet tall. I couldn't put that in a twenty-foot trench.
No, we'll taper back until the last, I don't figure out the dimensions are, but-
Take me back.
Well-
I don't want it by the side. I mean, that's, that's why there has to be one test exploration right now at the edge of Pine Street. That's what I wanna do. Right there where they, that.
I think we should do that as soon as I can.
That sinkhole, what, what I'm thinking is, Joe, when I looked at it, where that sinkhole is, you face Pine Street, set your machine here and dig that. Because we know from there, if we find, from there to the other way is okay, great. If it isn't, we can still keep going. Turn the machine around, back up towards the gully, and go the other way until we get to a road crossing or whatever issue. Repair this section, backfill. Okay, now we're gonna do a road crossing. Everybody ready? Dig, do it, and get out, you know? And I guess what I'm saying is, rather than do the test hole, dig it as if you're gonna make a repair. We know there's a problem. And just, just fix it, or whatever.
So, I wanna do just right there in that whole area, up to Pine Street. Like, there's conflicting information about the depth, you know?
Yeah, it's, it's an unknown. It's an unknown, and, and that's, that's been one of the problems. Really don't know, and, and, and I guess probably because of cost. You know, it's just been, but it's-
But if we can get, and if, if with the board approval, or if everybody's on the same page as what I'm talking about, talk with the county, see what's available. I don't think the town has anything like that. If they can help us, this is great, and, and let them understand that, you know, we really appreciate it. If, if they can't, put it out for bid, a real short time span. We, we need this, you know, within a week. I don't know if this is even sensible. Add in the paper, whatever. Villages Champlain looking for three quotes on excavating approximately fifteen to twenty-five feet. Need machine and operator. Done. Hourly rate requested. Get the three in, whoever's the cheapest, as long as they're reputable, and insured. And get certificate of insurance and the whole thing. Do it. Schedule it. Do it. All of a sudden, get three inches of rain that day, do it.
Yeah, we're gonna, you know-
Skip the law.
Lee, I guess we're gonna have to figure out where we're gonna be able to pay for this at some point in time, but it's something we have to do. It's, it's getting to the point where it's gonna be an emergency situation.
Well, especially if we fix the Garso Lake situation, this is even gonna, this is gonna bring more water, faster, down here with a thirty-six-inch culvert upstream. That's really gonna turn that, that up. I mean, like I say, and I hope they understood, we're limited budget here, but the liability on this, what could it cost? You know, you can't take that risk. You can't. Gonna be corrected. I think the key is speed on this one, is, is, uh-
Like I said, it's number-one priority, even over work on, uh-
Mowing grass or anything.
Oh, even paving streets, paving streets.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, you've got a green light to do it in those steps, whatever, whatever you come up with.
Just try and keep us informed all the way through. I'm not gonna, yeah, we're not gonna put a roadblock up for you, but I think we need to know where we're going with it. That's all.
And I'm nearby, if you, if you run into a snag of who's this and who's that, let me know, because I know most all the contractors-
Some, some questions make them up, you know?
Sure.
Referring to you, referring to whoever who did.
I, I, I think that, that should set aside for now. I mean, we're giving Joe the authority to go ahead with this, and-
It needs to be addressed.
Yeah.
So, do we need to make a motion on that, or?
I, I don't know. It's, because we, we have, it's an unknown at this point, what we really need to do, Janus. What, what do you think? Do we, as far as, we have no idea what the cost's gonna be.
Well, why don't I get the package, at least put together with an, an approximate cost, and give you a ballpark range of what it's gonna cost.
Regardless, we get quotes. The hourly rate is the hourly rate. We don't know how many hours anyways. And, and I think the priority of, of the movement, moving on this issue sooner the better.
I'm gonna give them a plan of attack before I just release the product.
This, this could get very costly, and, and it may come to a point where we may have to, uh, this begins to many thousands and thousands of dollars. We may need to do something as far as a, a BAN or that type of thing. I'm not sure.
Probably bond if it's large enough.
Right.
We have the paperwork that Bob submitted to, uh, to the Hoover and Clinton. I'll, I'll be sure that Joe gets that, and if there's something there, it'll be helpful.
Okay.
That's what he was going to do.
I think I copied that.
Do you have that?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I know it's, it's something that was looked into, but it just-
I remember talking with Bob about it. There was an earthquake thing he was trying to get, and he worked hard on it.
He did, and we got nowhere on that. There was no funds available, and the funds are not easy to come by for that type of thing. So-
So, we just need to bite the bullet, and, like I say, start at one spot. Hopefully, we can find the problem there, correct it, not go either way. But it's an unknown. We'll cross those bridges as we get to it.
And, and I think we could talk about it all night, but I don't think we've gotta keep following it. We don't, we're gonna work with it.
To have Joe proceed and if some costs, and to work with it as an emergency basis. Uh, with the understanding, and if it's going to be a great deal of money, we'd be just having a special meeting to include that, that we've covered. Unless you just sort of carry the whole thing as an emergency, which you can do.
Can we, can we do something like, um, we make a motion, do what it takes when you see it's gonna reach five grand? We need, we need to let somebody know, because we'll have a special meeting, so, okay, you're at five grand. Where are you, Joe?
Okay, I'd like to let you know it's gonna reach five grand.
Well, no doubt. But what I'm saying is, for five grand, you tell us what's in the bottom of there, at the sinkhole. Okay, uh, look, you want ten grand?
I mean, I don't wanna be crazy with this. Right there, I mean, that's not repair cost, that's exploration, and I, I know I'm gonna have to dig up Pine Street anyway, because of the broken sewer line that we keep hitting there.
Right, and none of that, you're gonna have to-
There's a shear right there on the edge of the street.
Where, where is it actually broken?
Right in the edge of the street on Saint Mary's side.
There's an eight-inch line that we think is broken, and it's sheared because of the weight of the road and soil.
And shouldn't that culvert be enlarged down there anyway?
Yes.
I mean, it's gotta be tore out anyways. It's an enlarged culvert.
Even if, if, even if it's in- Even if, even if it's in good shape under the road, it's still too small.
It's still going to be enlarged, right, yeah, it's still way too small, so regardless, we're going to end up tearing that up.
Can that exist if it went alone beside you, not knowing where that sewer line is?
Well, I can. It depends on what I find on the other side, the downstream side. In case I have to cross over or something, it might be a problem to leave it existing.
Yeah, because the added drainage could only help, it could only be plus.
If I can make it work, use the existing plus the new.
Just let us know what, where we stand. I mean...
Leave it as an emergency thing.
We might make a motion to have Joe spend up to ten thousand dollars to explore this emergency situation. If it becomes a great deal more, when we have, we're definitely answering them.
Okay, so we want to make a motion.
That way you're covered and it gives him a leeway to...
To get something to where we don't...
Just so you know, I already had a call...
Oh, no, 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 it is.
From the New York State Department about what they did down on Lower Main Street there when they crossed the road. I don't have plans on what they've done.
They did it twice. Because the underside is the first one.
Well, I'm trying to figure out how far they came up, the hill to St. Mary's. There's no, there's no document to date. If I know that, then I know what my constraints are.
Rather stop twenty feet short, geez, let's bite the bullet, do twenty feet and cure the hole.
Okay, so can I have a motion to go with spending up to ten thousand dollars as an emergency plan to investigate what the issues are and what needs to be done? And at later date, we will have to address any additional funds. So we have a motion, my trustee Poyer?
Second.
Second, my trustee Garrett. All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie. Okay, another item that I have is the fall pickup schedule. It's that time of year, unfortunately, that we got to think about picking up leaves and branches and those type of things. I guess, Joe, I defer this to you for dates. Let us know if you can attend tonight so we can get these published, what dates would be good for your group of prospecting. I know it could change, but...
Do you want the dates tonight?
Yeah, because we, because the next meeting is in October and by then, we should probably be thinking just about having these done. The pickups, usually it's in October, mid to late October.
Do you have two or three pickups in October?
We have one right after Halloween.
You usually have one before Halloween.
Another pickup after.
Before, because we don't want the leaves and stuff sitting around for kids to...
Okay, well, Halloween is a Sunday this year. So if we do the last pickup before, if we do Monday twenty-fifth, twenty-seventh is Wednesday. What day's a good for you? That week is the twenty-fifth and twenty-ninth.
As far as the lead early month. I think you should have one pickup in November as a thing.
Well, yeah, afterward, yeah, because there will be more leaves coming down. But we've definitely got to have at least one before Halloween.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I said after we do it too.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, I knew we had one before.
I'm telling you.
So do you want just the week right before Halloween?
Yeah, it's fine. We'll do it the Tuesday of that week.
Twenty-sixth. Okay. Then November, if we wait a week after Halloween, we're talking the eighth through the twelfth with the eleventh being Veterans Day.
We'll do it on Wednesday.
Wednesday the tenth.
Okay, and for some reason...
Should we do one at the very beginning of October for people cutting down stuff, you know, we start to thin things out now?
Uh, I think that's still too early in September. You know, we usually, at the very least, it'd be middle of October.
Okay.
If we...
Well, you know what would be a good time is right after the Columbus Day weekend, a long weekend, everybody working, you know, feeling the urge.
Okay.
Um, like the fourteenth or fifteenth, it's a Thursday or Friday. Or, I mean, you could do thirteenth, it's the Wednesday after the long weekend. Fourteenth?
So what day is that?
It's a Thursday.
Yeah, you know, depending on your schedule, this could change, you know, because of other things.
So I'll find out this morning. I'll check vacation schedules and make sure there's no problems and then defer it tomorrow.
Well, it's in my calendar now, so you can't change it.
Is it pencil or pen?
Pen, I put everything in pen.
Okay, good. Another thing I have is, I mentioned the last meeting about our village insurance and I thought about it and I really don't want to go out and spend five hundred dollars just to get the work done and more than that because of an hourly rate of a hundred dollars an hour for the company Norton Agency to do, answer additional questions, because the last time this was, it was eighteen hundred dollars. So what I did was, the help from Donna is, we went through the policy.
Our insurance, our village insurance.
Village insurance policy, you know, the thing like that.
Yep.
We went through and are preparing that to be sent out for quotes. And within the next month, hopefully less than that, we'd like to see, see that get sent out to whoever, we must have a list of who we're sending out to before the different companies.
I don't know, because the Norton Agency took care of it, but we don't certainly know where to send it to.
Yeah.
I think there's only, there's only three that...
I thought we were looking for anyway. Norton, I thought we insured a lot more.
We are. Norton is the agency that actually did the paperwork. They didn't bid on it. They're the ones that did the work.
They were paying, because that was the eighteen hundred dollars.
Preparing the insurance packet to get sent out to other insurance companies. They did the work for us that we're going to do. They didn't, they didn't, they don't handle insurance.
When did we do this?
Three years, three years ago?
Okay, all right. I remember going through the insurance here recently.
Yeah, this was three years ago, when they went through and they did it three years ago and probably six years ago. And they've done it two or three times, three times probably.
Anyway, if not three.
I know of once, that when I was on the board years ago, we did it the initial time and then it was done all the time when I was not on the board. Uh, so, I guess we're going to do this ourselves and see where we come.
I mean, the package is somewhat together anyways.
A lot of it is...
We revised quite a few things, so we know what we're looking for.
Yeah, well, we revised what we had as far as equipment and values and that type of things, yeah. But there's a lot of what they call boilerplate wording. That's probably ninety percent of, or even more percent of the actual packet.
Right.
So that's standard anyway. So we're going to get that out hopefully within the next month.
More, aren't we? Are we sending it to...
I don't know, but I don't know.
Oh, okay.
We don't know.
Oh, I thought you said we had, who do we usually go through or send it to?
No, no. Who we went through to do the work for us.
But we can hold a file with people we get quotes from, but we may find others to send it to.
Yeah, and the more, the better.
Mm-hmm, definitely.
So, all right. And the only other thing I have is, the next meeting falls on a holiday for some people, Columbus Day, uh, which is on a Monday, the, was it eleven? So we have to probably reschedule our meeting to another time, another date. So I guess, what's your pleasure? Any ideas?
I can move it up a week. I can't do the third, Monday. But other nights are fine, but my Mondays are committed to the Saturday, Thursday.
I'm hoping.
You're saying we'll do it on the fourth?
Yeah.
It's only two weeks, man. Oh, that's right, because we're always two weeks behind. Doesn't matter to me.
Sooner or later, buddy.
Yeah, doesn't matter to me.
Well, we've pulled through three weeks, huh?
It's three, yeah.
It depends on what time we have.
We're on the thirteenth now, right? One, two, it'll be three weeks.
Two weeks from this.
I say do it, because we got to, you know, follow up on this anyway.
Exactly, and then, you know, we'll have some other issues that will be hopefully solved by then.
Like they don't know something's going on over here.
It's April what?
Fourth. And it'll only be four weeks to the, because the next one, the first falls on Monday, so we're early for the November as well. So that'll be okay. I still feel it's four.
It's the number four.
Yeah, that's fine. Same time, same place, just different date. That's all I have. Trustee Parker.
Okay, a lot of the stuff we've already covered here this evening. Garso Lake issue, like I said, I put the residents up there and talked to them about that and we're moving on that, meeting minutes, answering machine. Burnt buildings, abandoned buildings, decaying buildings.
Do you want me to burn all the abandoned buildings?
I don't think so.
Just to let everybody know, I did read Joe's superintendent report and now we're going to wait until, I believe, the thirteenth.
Which is today.
Which is today. Did you get any notice?
I have not received a call back from the prospective buyer, so I will reissue the letter imposing fines. The problem is, I can't send it to certified mail. I still don't have a hard address, but you know, I think I can get one.
Right.
I know it on the source.
Well, to the people on Oak Street, we're still working on that issue. What's happening is the property might be switching over hands, so that's why we're giving a little bit of leeway in case the new owner stakes over. They're planning on remodeling the building from what I hear.
Yes.
So just to let you know, we're working on that. What about our, our building over here on Church Street? I've talked to the residents over there. They're very concerned about, still about slate falling off the roof, people's cars getting hit, kids getting hit, there's an apartment building right next door. I've been monitoring that building periodically, every four or five days. The crack in the side of that building where the air conditioner came out, this thing is just getting wider and wider and wider and it's going to, I mean, that part of the building is going to cave in eventually.
We received confirmation of the closing of the sale of that property. I have left two messages with the new owner. I have not received a call back.
Well, I think we should more than just take messages, we should pursue a legal avenue.
Well, he's a brand-new owner, but as of when, okay.
I don't care. That issue was there before he bought the building. He should have been aware of that if he did any kind of investigation of purchasing that building, sure. So we should just pursue whatever avenue we have, give notice and then go from there.
Another option would be a letter from your attorney prior to doing the action.
That would probably be the best one.
The software way to handle that.
Yeah, something about a letter that has the attorney's name on it always gets a little bit...
Well, I think it's one attorney to another, so you won't be paid by that.
But my concern is, like I said, there's a little, there's an apartment building next door. There's little kids. Kids are curious when they see stuff, something like that. They're going to, I mean, they're going to run right for it. And then the neighbors on the other side of the building, they can't even park in their own driveway.
This is an issue of almost two years now and it's just... Right, so we have, we have to get, become hard on this, you know, and do what we have to do.
And if we have to, you can meet with Justice Jack Badger.
Okay.
Ask him our options.
I will.
To close our foot down because I keep, I've been talking to these people, telling them we're trying to do, we're trying, well, I'm tired of telling them we're trying. We're going to, we've got to do something about this, whatever it takes. Let's move on. Because this is, somebody's going to get hurt. Next thing you know, we're all going to be sitting here, you know, with real liability issues. So if you could address that, I'd be really happy with that. Next, I'd like to discuss the streets. We got the Walnut Street. The guys in our village here did an excellent job prepping that. Uh, it came out wonderfully. It was, it turned out, I don't know if everybody had a chance to read superintendent's report yet. It's pretty much explanatory in there, the first two lines of what we did and why we did what we did. I'd like to thank trustee Poyer, who not only donated the equipment, his time, his employees' time, covered all costs for handling his employees up there, his insurance cost, the gasoline cost. Trustee Poyer donated all this to the village, to the taxpayers.
There was, there was a bill for gasoline.
I did get a ten-dollar bill for gas.
A ten-dollar bill for gasoline, so...
We had to make a bill.
All right, and from what I understand is you had three employees beside yourself up there, four employees, equipment. This was all donated at no cost to the taxpayers except for the ten-dollar. And I'd just personally like to thank him and his men for doing such a great job up there. We really appreciate it. It really shows where your heart is and that you're really here to do something good for the village and that. And I personally want to really thank you. Such a difference. I've already heard from people at the Kimpek's building of how nice it is to be able to drive through there three times a day without worrying about the alignment, their tires and every other problem that you can go through hitting huge buckwells.
All they did was back my commitment. I did commit at one point in time that I'll do the first street just to get something done so we can get the most bang for the, for the buck.
And we did.
And that's what we did.
I'm not sure, did we come up with a complete cost analysis on that, Joe, yet?
The hard material costs right now are roughly sixty-four hundred dollars.
Sixty-four hundred, and that's absolutely amazing. Anybody's ever had your driveway paved? My dad did his driveway. It's a small driveway, paid twenty-five hundred dollars. So to have this much of a street done for that price is just phenomenal and it's really, you know...
Two streets, actually.
Two streets, actually, yeah, exactly. Cherry, because we went up to the manhole cover. Manhole cover up there was a huge situation. That manhole cover was sticking up almost four inches. What was happening is as a snowplow comes up in the wintertime, they've actually hit this manhole cover a few times and stopped dead in their tracks.
Well, they've thrown the truck entirely off the road.
Right, right. Almost put somebody in the windshield of the vehicle. It was a huge problem. So anyways, I want to personally thank you again on behalf of the taxpayers and me and the trustee. Fantastic job. Uh, some other things I've been dealing with, the school issue, the elementary school, I kind of, I, I held back in that for a while because I thought A R C was going to really take over the building. And recently, I've learned through the Great Pines that A R C will not be interested in that building anymore. So I am going to go back and I've already put two months of research into cost, liability, all the issues we'd have to deal with. And so I'm going to renew this effort. And hopefully by the next board meeting, I'll be able to present all of you with a proposal that I'd like to present on behalf of the village and its taxpayers to the school board. I'd like to see the building used, seen as the center of our community. I'd like to see it used as an adult education center, a place for our kids to go, to increase that ballpark, fix that ballpark back up, uh, all kinds of adult education classes, computer classes, whatever the village needs are. We also have Boy Scouts, Cub Scouts, Girl Scouts, we have all kinds of organizations that would be interested in using this building. I think we can pay for the building and the upkeep and cost of the building by renting the upper floors. I'm still working on that, but I've got a really positive outlook on this and I know if we all put our hearts to it and our minds, we can, we can do this. Whether or not the school board accepts it or not is another situation. But it'll be an improvement, it'll be an asset, it'll give our children something, someplace to go. Let's use that gymnasium. From what I understand, St. Mary's Gymnasium is constantly booked and they're turning people away. Well, wouldn't it be nice if we could bring some kids back into that gymnasium? So let's use it. Let's, it'll be a place to bring the community together. We all get to know our neighbors a little bit better. It's a nicer community that we all live in. That's my hopes and aspirations for that. Also, after reading Superintendent Webb's monthly report, I'd like to thank him for the detailed letter he sent to John Dear.
Excellent job, Bravo.
Which actually saved the taxpayers of the Village of Champlain ten thousand dollars in repairs. We've got this backhoe back. Didn't cost us a penny to fix it. Now we have two backhoes operating. I understand it's operating fine. It's in, it's got a guarantee on its parts and service.
We have a little problem with the four-wheel drive, but it's under warranty.
But, but you just saved the taxpayers ten thousand dollars in, in your first six months of being as a superintendent. It's amazing. It's amazing. Also, further on, I've read about the wastewater treatment plant. How you're changing the hours down there to give us a little bit more time, another extra man on the road crew, which is really important. We're working with the minimum amount of people and the cost savings that you, that you've come up with on that is just, it's another five thousand dollars.
I think the employees are happy with that, too.
And the employees are happy. It's a better schedule.
And it's a morale booster. You don't want one guy working every weekend of his life.
Exactly.
And to top it all off, did you see the report of how a wastewater treatment plant's running? Ninety-nine percent efficient.
Excellent job.
Did you see that report? Ninety-nine percent. So we know that whoever's working down there is proud of their job and doing their job.
And you should thank the operators down.
And we do, we do. A pat on the back, excellent job and, and I mean, you know...
It all sounds like... It, it all sounds like pennies, but I think what Paul's trying to get at, this is what we're focused on. You take ten ground on a loader, you take men that are happier in the workplace, it took a man and made an extra man on the road crew. It's, I know it's little stuff, but you start adding this up, hopefully, come our budget year, we might have ten dollars extra to work with. Who knows?
No, we just proved ten thousand for Champlain.
Even more.
But the problem in, in these people should be, is they're safer places.
Yeah, recovered, right.
That's right.
Yeah.
But anyways, what I wanted to get to is just, uh, I mean, I, just your monthly report this month, I'm seeing fifteen thousand dollars in savings. And, and this is just, that's, that's fantastic. I mean, you've done a great job.
See him work from the whole team.
And, just thanks. Thanks so much for, for all your hard work on this, along with the grants and everything else that you're working on.
The grants, that we don't have yet.
We don't have enough tape just to tell you all the things I'd like to thank you for.
The red tape.
And, um, that's pretty much it for me. I've got some, uh, an issue for executive session, a personnel issue. And, uh, other than that, uh, that's it for me. Thank you.
Trustee Garrett?
I'm short and sweet. Everything that I had has been totally covered. And, uh, villagers came. I told them to come tonight when we were here. Nothing new. We've heard it all already tonight.
Trustee Poyer?
Um, a lot of my stuff's been covered, too. Um, but we talked about the efficiency, ninety-nine percent. Bravo to Woody. Uh, Pine Street flooding, we've talked about. Um, water line to school, and what do we need? Final cost, okay. The water line up to the N C C S, what do we need, uh, what do we need to do to finalize the cost with Jim?
I have to get with Jim and Art. This is down for Howard with him. People over his school.
He's been out for some.
I know. He's got a back, uh, back injury or something.
I talked to him last week, and, uh, he's, he said he's still supposed to be out for another eight weeks. Uh, he was in for a couple days, but he wasn't supposed to be because, uh...
Well, some of this week he was, well, he's, he wasn't up to speed.
Just, just so the board is up to speed, I met with Rossus Point again today in regards to the water tower. And, um, it is still open for us at any time. They're still doing one more test, a lead-based test to it, to make sure it is lead-free. Just so the board knows, it, it, any opportunity that we get, we can cure a lot of our water pressure problems for N C C S, border.
Change the border.
And the people on Prospect, who are at the upper elevation, they're running pumps at this point. Um, so that's, that's where a lot of that's coming from.
Okay.
Um, oh, I want to thank Joe for the, uh, the revisions and the updates on the village insurance policy that he so kindly took care of, as I said.
No, that was, uh, that was a request from Mr. Conrads, from the Conrads, of his work, uh, he's doing on the insurance policy.
Right.
It was from, that was revised, done last, on last year's policy.
On last year's?
Yeah.
Right. I just seen it somewhere.
I just, I just asked him for the, what would, what has been changed since we renewed our policy, uh, from last year.
Right. Right. And I guess that's what I was looking at, all the changes that you made.
It would take you a year to go through the five hundred pages of that policy to pick out what we changed.
Well, that's what I'm getting at.
So, we're, and I, I spoke with Donna today. We're gonna be updating those on the existing packet that we had, to make sure everything's up, up to speed, and then that's what we're gonna use as, as basis to.
Well, looking, looking at that, what I'm, what I'm saying is the changes that he made or found, I'm thanking him for that. It, it's something of, some of those issues were there for a couple years that nobody ever took care of, but, uh, but that, that's a good thing. Whatever we move forward with that. Um, there's a memo, and I think we, we talked about this a little bit earlier, about, uh, schooling. Uh, I've, I've talked to Joe about it, as far as the net, that the board should be aware. Normally, somebody's going to a school on, on, uh, there's time and hours and equipment. We should come in front of the board for approval. Um, so I've talked to Joe about that, and I guess, uh, Janice and Donna, I noticed another one in here for, uh, for, uh, Donna going to a school as well. What we'd like to see is, um, a request in front of the board, prior to scheduling these, if at all possible. I know a lot of times they don't land right. We had a water issue with Ronnie and Larry, I think, a while ago. The two of them went in the same week.
Right.
It was miscommunication information, but, but, uh, they do it in all the other municipalities, and, and I, I think we should be doing it here on a regular basis, letting the board just be aware of what's going on. Um, oh, if I read my own writing, I'd be all set. Sorry, I think, okay, that was the school. There's another, I, I noticed a grant in there that I didn't really read through the whole thing, that I thought was, uh, may pertain to... Oh, it was in historic buildings. They got up to two-hundred thousand dollars, uh, for nonprofit organizations. No, did you read through that at all, Joe?
Yes, I did. I, that's the Main Street renovation program for historical buildings.
Yes.
I think it didn't apply to us, because it'd be an existing business.
An existing nonprofit business?
Yeah.
Okay. I wasn't positive of that, but that's, I wanna get, just in hopes that we would, uh, get something out of that. Um, and were the letters sent to the, uh, to the bank and Parker regarding the decision we made the last board meeting?
No.
They weren't?
I did not send them, only because I was in negotiation with the water sewer contracts.
With the town?
Yes. And I received notice from their attorney that all the district fine paperwork had been sent in. And I met Friday with that attorney, and I've spoken to James Keagle, and all he has is a cover letter. So, I told them that I will be sending them letters of termination of service, um, unless I have final approval on the, uh, part of it. And that'll, that'll happen tomorrow if I don't have the paperwork. I have to call their attorney again.
So, he'll get a letter with them next week?
Yes, within the week.
Right.
Depending on what I hear back from their attorney.
I mean, we talked about the last board meeting, it was kind of an issue that the longer we wait, the worse it's gonna be. We need to address this.
I intended to finalize the water sewer contracts and then issue that.
Right.
But it didn't work out that way.
And how far away are the water sewer contracts?
A day.
A day. So, we're, we're close to finalizing that.
Yes, I have all the issues. I, I, I will give you and Chuck a memo on what the three changes are if you request.
Excellent.
They're minor.
And that's all I got.
Okay, reporter, Tom Treasure?
I just had my financial report with my bloggers, uh, revenue and signature, and the file I have.
Sorry, reporter Superintendent?
I think you've all received my report. Uh, I have no, uh, no special issues to review this evening. I think you've given me enough already. And, um, if you have any questions, please feel free.
Did you, were you able to look at that, um, that I talked to earlier, the car lot up on, um...
I did not go out since our call this morning, but I will look at it in one.
One more time?
This, same car lot you, you had discussed.
Well, I've been mentioning to you for the past six months.
Well, I had another complaint today about excessive number of cars, and that the yard is not being upkept around the ice bushes that were planted, and...
I have to find, I can't find, I haven't looked hard yet, but I'll look to see if there's any, uh, conditions on the permit there for the number of cars that can have in the lot.
Well, that, but the, the corner area where the, the shrubs are, that's not that residence, it's area. That's belong to New York State.
Right, but they put them in on, that this gentleman who owns the property would upkeep around it and take care of that.
I don't know if that was, what was the situation with that.
That's what I was told. So, I don't know. That's what we're gonna find out.
Because he didn't own one of the shrubs. Okay. Oh, so it's a stipulation when he purchased it.
Right. There, there was a, um, what's the word I want?
No, play. Stipulation.
Yeah, there was something that, that, it's not the word, writer, writer.
Is, uh, it's not?
Something in fact, that it happened when Sullivan was here, Mr. Sullivan, and they had done a, um, adjustment to it. And that's not the word I want, but, um, I told you earlier, I had the word, but it's gone. Yeah, it's gone today.
And you haven't flown over here, but I'll find it.
Yeah, okay, let me get it, you know. Anyway, um, so there was the complaint, that it's just, it's not being upkept, and it's an ice sort of, those neighbors who are upkeeping their property around it, and it's not okay. So, he's checking into a couple, I'm just curious.
Well, I, I thought it was Clinton County Highway's problem, and I do have a call into that also.
Okay, great.
I thought it was New York State.
Well, see, I didn't, I didn't realize that. I went, I went ahead and was thinking Clinton County Highway.
Because that was all done when they redid that road?
Yeah.
Maybe so, indeed. A little island, a little bit of that.
It's not that big of a strip of land, is what we're talking. It's not really, it's just a little be.
Hundred feet, five, five feet, a little.
Yeah.
Just a little corner there.
But, but that's, that's one of the, like I said before, that's one of the issues. The other issue is the cars parked too close to the road, and visibility and all that, and it's...
It'll make it personal.
Especially with, uh, school in session now. I, I, two or three times, bus driver has, has said they can't see that intersection, which we don't want anything happening there.
Okay. Anything else for Superintendent Webb? Do you want a correspondence?
Item one, correspondence is the, um, criminal loss control evaluation after the meeting. Just, right. No questions. Uh, item two is correspondence and underwater solutions regarding the water tank repair. Question, are we going to be doing anything with that?
Oh, it's already done. He just didn't get the bid.
Right.
Item three is correspondence from ICE dot com regarding the water, the materials.
And that has been signed, correct?
Yes. Received a bag Thursday afternoon.
Correspondence survey from the Clinton County Health Department.
If I could say, Amy, I should give you a copy of that report, the Clinton County Health. That was a thorough analysis of all, uh, um, organics.
Oh, okay.
Okay, then maybe, I think there's a referee content there, too.
I'll give it a listen. Say, you have probably have five bills.
Okay. Is that number five, are you?
Yes, it's number five.
Do you even have that, uh, yeah. How do the next item is number five, with the, um, water sample results from the Clinton County Health Department, plus correspondence to the Champlain result.
Yes.
Item six is sea life rate treatment schedule from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation.
So, people know it's September twenty-first, we're gonna be doing it.
They're supposed to be coming out this week to do their preparations to set up. They have some, uh, water tanker trucks set up for feeding cattle and anybody that's tied into the river with livestock.
So, it does affect village residents, but it does affect town residents?
Yes.
This will be good to get this taken care of, too. Anybody that fishes or, or uses the lake.
I mean, this is at least the third time they've done that.
Oh, yeah, this is.
It's my understanding they treated several years ago, and then backed off a little bit, and found out the problem just reoccurred faster than they could control.
I think they treated that river at least twice already.
Right.
And this would be the third time. But they, yeah, they, they did. They, they took longer in treating it than the last time, than they did the previous time before that.
Item seven is correspondence from the Clinton County Legislative Office, performing a council meeting that we had around Lake Park, which is a voyage to go. Uh, eight is correspondence to John Dear confirming the repair of our backhoe. And nine is correspondence to American Legion, advising us that it's a village-wide sale in the following year.
Do we know where that's gonna take place, or, or similar area?
Basically, what the village had before, where every individual has their own, that's the items. This is just to inform. That's the twenty-first? I'm not sure that, right?
September twenty-fifth, from eight to four.
Townwide, village-wide garage sale.
Village-wide.
Just so people know.
And I'm just wondering, um, with all these parks and areas we have that we're keeping moving stuff, uh, where do we stand as a village as far as offering, say, uh, between the barber shop and, uh, barber shop and the old Napa place? Say, if somebody wanted to set something there, because they're on an end of a street or not on the main, as a community, um...
So, it could be good use for that, for that.
It would. Is it, is it still a little rock shape as far as the parking lot, I mean?
It's a rock, but it's parkable, or you can set up stands if you needed to, or play area.
fruits, vegetables, if somebody wanted to get rid of some of their gardening items.
Put a pining table, put your stuff on, or a card table, and, you know, like...
Would that require a permit in the village, or do we have to?
Well, I think if we have a neat, or a village-wide sale, there's no permitting for that.
As long as you're a village resident.
Village resident, yeah, absolutely.
The village isn't sponsoring it. She's just saying that the region is going to, um...
Right. That they're sponsoring.
Close a, if someone wants to sell something in the village, we have to go to the air to get a head lift for that, or...
If they're selling something in the village, not being a village resident, so they...
Well, even inside the village, you sell something, you go door-to-door, that type of thing.
Right.
As far as setting up something downtown, you want to be concerned with having the liability, which is just technical.
Okay.
You know, telling people to go on our land and sell, you know, issue we're covering.
Right. Well, I mean, being parks, where they're on our land, but to sell something on our land, I guess. Well, so would it be correct in saying that, um, if we sent a letter to American Legion, telling them, if they're, if you're sponsoring it, and you would, we can make this space available to you, that's your, your responsibility or whatever? In other words, if this helps you, you are able to use this area for your village-wide yard sale.
And I think at this point, I could look to, like, for future, this twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth yard sale, though I'm sure you'll put it down in the paper closer to that date.
Actually, while, while we're on this thing, what I would like to see is, I'd like to see a letter go to our attorney. I, I, I hear this liability issue, and I understand it completely. But what I'd like is something from our attorney that explains to us what is our liability. As far as the village using our property and having other people come on our property, what would our liability be? I mean, if we could outline, uh, our liabilities, and what we have to watch out.
First of all, if it's listed as a park, I'm sure anybody can walk across there. Like Janice was saying, if you're selling something from not necessarily a business.
It's, I think it all depends on use.
Right, and we're talking about putting ice cream in this winter, so...
And the ice cream, uh, we've got correspondence, Donna found something at one time from somebody that ice creamed. They're doing it in other communities. Great thing.
Yeah, it was a liability, it was financially, and they, nobody would really want insurance.
A skateboard park, I would imagine, that's, that's some danger, danger.
Well, I want to get hold of the people who put one down at, um, Bailey Avenue Park, because that was just totally awesome, and that would just be so totally wonderful here. So, we'll look into that.
One step at a time.
That's right.
That's good, because that's what we need. We need this. We need things for our kids to do.
That was the whole idea, bringing power to that pole, so we have at least a music or radio.
And I think last year, we talked about the skating rink, and, and you were, I think, probably the one that brought it up originally, I believe. So, and that's something we still may want to pursue, is the skating rink.
I've been bringing that up when I first got here.
Okay.
We've talked about it.
So, I mean, uh, I, I think that still should be pursued for this winter, and, uh...
Yeah, because Rain has already ran, actually, ran the power over to the pole already.
I've got a tour and a service over there in Conduit, and I donated that for this cause as well, too, because our park recreation fund is very minimal, so...
Yeah, that was another donation, I mean, but it's all set up and ready to, to go. We're hoping that the party department will help us out this year with some, uh, some water for the skating rink.
And Monday night practices, they could...
I don't think that will be a problem.
No, no.
That's what I'm saying. It should be a very minimal expense for the village to get one thing going with a street light.
Right.
You know, it's...
It'll be nice. The skate, I like ice skating at night. I think it would be, uh...
You could use a little, uh, cat snowplow to keep it to your horse.
Yes.
Sharpen it, like. You're not gonna have an example.
I think we could for that.
That's in the long-term capital, it's really important.
Okay, tolls business? Uh, okay, we already discussed the, uh, the town water, so we're districts, uh, well, the, the contract, but the districts, uh...
They're, they're still working on the issues of the other ones.
The ones that are, are-
Are not all registered.
Okay. Steam plant system bill, that's still-
Don't return the calls, I mean, I dropped the issue, and talked to them.
Our purchase policy?
You want to drop that?
I, I would.
Okay, so we aren't receiving any more bills from them, we haven't paid them anything.
They say send a letter, they don't-
We never received what they're supposed to send us as far as the price.
We have the bill that we, we held, the check.
Right. Dead issue?
Purchase policy, that's, that's an ongoing issue, we, we'll address that at some point in time. The zoning law?
I spoke to Mr. Keighley last week, he's working with the county to find out what he has to have into them, and approved by them, and then we set up a care, so we're half a step closer.
Okay, heating cost reduction office garage, what do we have on that?
Well, I have purchased some materials just to begin sealing up the windows, some caulk and some backer rod, I will address the major insulation that we need in the roof area over the next couple of weeks, that's what we need.
All right, parks grant?
In progress, and hopefully by the end of the month, it'll be written and issued for pricing, for a design one.
Okay, John Dear backhoe repair, that's, that's done, and it's all taken care of, thank you. And then this insurance claim?
It's an ongoing issue, I spoke to the agent last Thursday again, he needed some information from me on the Champlain Fire Department and EMS traffic over there, and he also asked if there had ever been a claim paid to our north neighbor here for any, any supposed damages from our truck traffic. As far as I know, Janice says she's not aware of anything.
And we do, we have paid the use of that road as well.
On the south, that's our, the trauma.
Yep. So if he, I mean-
It's being handled by the insurance companies.
And did you explain to them so they, I mean, I'm sure they understand, they, he accepted payment for the use of a space, whatever damages.
I've explained that to, to Kevin with Select of Insurance.
Okay, new business?
It's gonna be a prolonged period.
Do we have any new business?
I have something I'd just like to bring up, I was, I'd like to see our planning board, is there any way we could meet with the planning board, would this have to be a public meeting for the trustees and the board to meet with the planning board? Is there any way we can, we're trying to plan what we're gonna do in the future for the village, the planning board's trying to plan what they're gonna do in the future for the village, and neither one of us touch bases with each other.
I think what you're gonna find is the planning board takes over from someone who comes in and wants to do something, they'll, they'll come up with an idea of how to do that, or where they should do it, or whatever. Then, then, actually, I'm a liaison for the planning board, I take this information back to the board and say, hey, so-and-so was there, they talked about this, they want to do that, the planning board was a stalemate, or they, they figured they should go this way or that way.
It's not new projects that they take on, you know, people, you know-
It's not like new development, it's a-
It's, people come to them when they want to do something, not the village.
Like, say you want to put an addition on your house, you need to go the planning board first, from planning to zoning?
For an addition to a house, it doesn't go-
Just zoning.
It doesn't go for the zoning board.
Planning is for something new.
Right. If it exceeds code parameters.
Well, what I thought was happening was, I mean, if we're gonna set out and outline what we want to do in the future for the Village of Champlain, and the planning board's doing the same thing, they don't do the same thing.
No, they're not doing the same thing.
No, no.
They're not involved in that, they're more on the, the legal end of it as far as what, what, what all the legalities of it is, and they, and the, and that's what we want.
Like, say, for example, industrial park, and I can only relate to that because it's the only one that I've been to, because there is not much activity there, when a door requests to put a building, she needs to make an appointment with the planning board. She comes to the planning board and says, here's a map, this is what I'd like to do, is this okay with you? And the planning board says, well, we think so, but we want more trees in the front, or it has to be ditched over here, or, they help plan the project, they don't necessarily say, we want you to put this building, and you do this, it's out of there.
Yeah, so it's not a long-term, old village project.
Right, no, it only happens depending on what's happening in the village.
If an individual wants to divest their property, that would have to be a part of the, the thing.
Right, right, well, what I'm, I'm thinking is, if we want to do something long-term for the village and set goals for ourselves for long-term, then that's what we need, we need to think about, get all parties involved and go, this is what we want to accomplish in long-term.
Yeah, and the planning board would need to be involved in it.
All right, so it's just us?
That's it.
The only other new thing that I will have the details of at the next meeting is plan for our Halloween party for October 30th, I'll have all the details at the next meeting.
What is pulling, are you doing those?
No, we have it.
Same Mary, usually.
That's why I always have it. Any other new business? I have one item that I should have brought up before, and I, and we received this letter from Bobcats Insurance Agency, and it's on behalf of the town of Champlain, and it's just a matter of formality, is, because as you're aware, the town of Champlain maintains water sewer districts, however these services are provided by the village, they just want the, the village to carry on our policy, the town's insurance carrier request, town be listed as additional insured on the village policy, which is standard.
Well, we did that on our water sewer contract anyway.
Yeah.
We wanted coffee, ours, we sent a coffee.
I already have that certificate, I haven't issued it yet.
Just, just so it's on our insurance policy, that's all, it's just a formality. So, that's, yeah, for new business? Okay, I guess at this time, you, there was a request for executive session, discuss personnel, you had something?
Yes.
You want to make that request?
Well, I'd make the request, we'll go into executive session for personnel issue.
Okay, and the second? Okay, yes. Motion being my trustee Barker, second my trustee Corey, all in favor?
Bye.